That was a few times. You winged the first four.
I was just about to say, I think I could probably do it by memory, but it would be better if I go ahead and get it out just in case. There we go. Okay, we will call to order the meeting for the Shenandoah City Council held Wednesday, February 10th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. Call the roll and notice that everybody is here. We're going to stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance, and then if you would like to stay standing with me, I'll say a quick invocation for us.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America, and as you're the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And as always, we say thank you, thank you for your love, for your grace, for your forgiveness, please keep your hand of blessing on this city, on its residents, its staff members, its strategic partners. Keep your hand of wisdom on us as we make our way through this agenda tonight and help us guide the city in as best we can and make the best decisions we can for all those people involved. We appreciate everybody showing up here, everybody that takes an interest in making sure that this is the best place that we can live, play, pray, and work. We pray these things.
Their target is Saturday.
Agenda, clearing of where that would be held, it's not held by five.
Correct.
It's held in actually in their courtyard area.
That's correct.
Have natural plaques cross from A to Z.
That's one of the stipulations in the draft ordinance.
Yes, basically a pilot and it's good for how long?
Twenty days.
This has to be attached to the event, not in front of the road. Okay, that wasn't clear to me, but reading all right now. Yeah, eighteen point seven, twenty-two point eleven.
Right, I missed your question.
So where does this property have to display?
They can display it anywhere on their property, the way this is written. And we did that on purpose because with three sales, we don't know what's effective and what's not, and has adjusted the map according to that. The upper left blue area, which was not included before, is now designated single-family residential. And the area which was the Conroe ISD Stadium and Oak Ridge High School and the other schools, as well as the area east of the railroad tracks, Planning and Zoning marked as mixed-use slash light industrial. This month, Planning and Zoning is meeting to find, hopefully, we will finalize the text part of the comprehensive plan. Our goal is to bring that to you next month, then the following month, depending on the schedule and comments from City Council, the possibility of passing the comprehensive plan. That would mean that the citizens, including last month, will have had four opportunities to, in front of City Council, to talk about the comprehensive plan, and seven opportunities in front of Planning and Zoning to talk about the comprehensive plan. I might add that Planning and Zoning's meeting this month, in addition to working on and hopefully completing the text part of the comprehensive plan, is also meeting with an expert in restaurant development, and we hope to find out and talk with him about the prospects of more restaurants in our city and where those might be located, which we hope will lead us further when we get to the IDC and actual zoning to hone in on some of those areas. So we will be returning to you next month with information more on the comprehensive plan and a summary of what Planning and Zoning has learned from this real estate restaurant developer. And if anyone has any questions or comments regarding the comprehensive plan map, obviously it's open for discussion now. If you have any comments or thoughts after you've studied it, if you would send me an email, I will be happy to present those to Planning and Zoning so we can discuss those at the next meeting.
So I actually do have a question. So in looking at the map and the area that's kind of being designated as mixed-use and light industrial, I guess I would question as to why they're dedicating so much of that to that category, especially since, from what I've seen, and of course, we haven't had anything official come about, we've had inquiries, none of them have been for mixed-use or light industrial.
The mixed-use, first of all, the basis of the light industrial were based on meetings primarily with Tom Bazula, who met and talked about that that the areas not directly adjacent to Tamina Road, but say 400 feet back on either side, could go high-density residential, also could go light industrial, the type of warehouse with office in front would be something that the land and land prices probably would support. Obviously, the areas along Tamina Road and 400 feet north and south is probably going to be retail or commercial. The areas where the schools are, frankly, Planning and Zoning could not foresee in the next 10 years that that not be school property, but for the sake of completing the map, they were thinking more further out than 10 years and saying, that's probably the best guess that we can come up with at this time. And the same would be true far east of the railroad tracks.
Right. I guess my concern is moving forward is if we look at moving from this into an IDC, I would hope that we could eliminate a lot of the SGP requests that we receive.
That's going to be our goal. Remember, the comprehensive plan is not zones. It is, it's just a big 30,000-foot picture of how we see the city developing.
Well, that's my point, is it's how we see the city developing, which means that the IDC is going to coincide with where this map is, which creates a lot of questions, especially when we get in that Tamina Road area, that you and I both know that the pricing along the road for that land is not going to be light industrial.
No, right, you will see, when you get to zoning, I think that you will see the 400, I believe 400 feet is kind of standard for commercial. I think you'll see that the corridor 400 feet on Tamina Road on either side will be commercial slash retail, and then the areas further back will end up being either high-density residential, light industrial would be my guess.
Because as soon as David Memorial opens up all the way to 242, that whole map on that side is going to change considerably, and I don't see what they're seeing right here. I think that's a mistake.
I think what Councilman Fletcher is saying is, if we know we want that to be retail, why wouldn't we put that on here as being retail? I mean, this, it isn't zoning, you're right, it's a 30,000-foot view, but so let's kind of paint it as the 30,000-foot view we want to see. We want to see that as retail going down Tamina Road, so why wouldn't we put that on here?
And certainly, I'm happy to take that back to Planning and Zoning.
I think once David Memorial opens up, again, I would see everything east of the railroad tracks probably being more light industrial from that perspective, but I think everything on the west side of the tracks is going to have a completely different picture.
You know, I think also, and I'm saying this as I'm thinking it, so I haven't thought it all the way through, I'll be clear, be upfront and say that, but I feel like we could do something with neighborhood services that more clearly defines what we would like. I think we all want that to be redeveloped, you know, going up and down that, going down that side of I-45.
That's, the reason it's in a different color is Planning and Zoning right now does not plan, does not anticipate that being neighborhood services. Our current zoning with certain changes, it could be C1, it could be C3, would be the two most likely categories. Both of those zoning requirements, C1 and, I believe it's C1 and 3, I may have, would require some modification. The closest, I believe, is C3, which is called community, community commercial, I believe it is, but that's going to require, once we've decided how that redevelopment we would like to foresee, then we will make changes in the definition of C3.
So then I go back to, if this isn't zoning, and this is just really kind of what we would like to see, 30,000-foot view, why wouldn't we, why wouldn't we change that on here so that we sort of have a map of, this is really what we want? We don't want to stay neighborhood services, we don't want to, we would like for this to redevelop along that.
What, because, the reason is because right now, we haven't gotten that deep into how we want, whether we want to use C1 or C3 and how we want to define it.
I understand, I'm just, I'm envisioning five, six years from now, a future council is referring back to this map, and none of us may be here, right? And they're like, well, gosh, those guys wanted it, I mean, it says right here on the map, those guys wanted it to be neighborhood services, why would we put that new development there?
Well, and we can certainly rename that right now, redevelopment zone.
Something, yeah.
We can call it that, that's fine.
And then that would actually let the world know too, that we would like to see that.
Right.
That's actually not a bad term, so.
Yeah.
Okay, any more questions for Bill on the comprehensive plan or comments? Please tell Planning and Zoning we do appreciate all their work on this, though. I know they're working hard on it, and it's extremely important, too.
They are, and they appreciate your comments back, believe me.
It's important.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, with that, we will move to item 13, which is our second Citizens Forum, and I don't believe anybody signed the treaty of importance, no?
No.
Then we will move to item 14, which is the City Administrator Updates. Kathy?
All right, I've got a few for you. First of all, you're aware of the sex trafficking operation last week, it was a huge success, multi-agency operation that took a lot of people and a lot of planning. The operation rescued several juveniles, one of which was missing, and several arrests were made, so this is, this was a good, very good thing for all involved. Secondly, the vaccination event that was held at the stadium went very well. We look forward to the success of the second round of shots, which will be on the 26th and 27th of this month, and all this came together in one week. We had a one-week lead time, so it was a very successful, PD handled a lot of traffic management, so it was a great cooperative effort between four groups. Police report thefts of catalytic converters have increased throughout the county. Shenandoah and Conroe have arrested several suspects for this thefts in two separate We've got two new hires, the code enforcement position has been filled, and a patrol officer position, they both start Monday.
Nice.
And last but not least, Councilman Mayor Proton Broad's birthday is tomorrow.
Happy 50th birthday.
Happy birthday.
Twenty-first.
And that's all of that.
Thank you, Kathy. Well, with that, we will start with the birthday boy, Mayor Proton.
I'm good, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman McCloskey?
Yeah, just, I've been out there, the traffic moved really, really smoothly, people complimented how smoothly the issue was going on, some people may not be aware there was actually a regional swim meet going on at the same time at the Adderley, so there was a whole lot of management difference, and it was just, it was really well-run. People handled themselves very well, and anyway, just compliments to our staff, CISD staff, of course, Memorial, Herman, Montgomery County, all the people who are involved in that, it was really, it was really smooth, and we saw minimal impact on our residents, unlike some of the other sites, what I won't name, but basically blocks traffic for, on major streets causes a big snarl, this was really smooth, so kudos to our police. That's it.
Councilman Christie?
Nothing for me today.
Councilman Randmeeker?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Troy and Jake and Joel for the sting and doing such a good job with that, so thank you for doing that. And while I'm not big on signing bonus checks, I am for giving accolades to Kathy for reaching out to the county to do the COVID response and for our participation in any way that we could.
Councilman Fletcher?
Yeah, a couple of things. One, I want to thank Lisa and the job that you and your staff do and working with those involved in the audit, those that serve on council that are part of that audit board as well, another great job this year. I was thrilled in the, in the audit, it said that our legal expenses had increased, I was thrilled to identify that none of that was due to litigation. But it was due to things like the comprehensive plan and acquiring land to make our rivers flow faster. I just want to say thanks, Bill, for all that you do for us. I'm really excited about the comprehensive plan and the IDC to come, I think that'll have a great impact in our city for years to come, so I'm excited about that work that you're engaged in there. And of course, Troy and our men and women in blue, just the report that we received this week in regards to your policing efforts and proactive efforts and means that you guys are currently taking and the difference that that's beginning to make in our city. It's great to have a reputation, again, of being one of the safest cities around, not one that has the reputation of the speed trap, but the one that has a reputation that if you're going to commit crime in Shenandoah, you're going to do the time. And I really appreciate the job that you guys do for us all the time, so thank you for that. Kathy, of course, the job that you do, I didn't say anything last week with the bonus, like Ron, I'm not a big bonus guy, but I think when somebody goes above and beyond to do the job that they're normally required to do, and you definitely have this year, and so we appreciate, again, all that you do for our residents, for our businesses, and of course, for us up here, you make us look really good many times as well, so.
Thank you.
Thank you all. That's it, man.
Hey, Mayor, before you move on, I wanted to thank Lisa too, because Louis isn't the only one that I give the business to during the audits. Thanks, Lisa.
Is that why she says Ron who?
Couple of questions, mostly for Kathy, might as well go ahead and throw it out there, any updates from Entergy on their project, anything different than two weeks ago, timelines?
I have, I have requested a follow-up more than once, and they're also looking into, not only is well done, but there's some broken curbs that they have to come back and fix, so between Joseph and I, we're staying on them about that, but I never did get a definitive answer this week, so I'll keep chasing it.
Okay. I'd like to put that on everybody's radar, that I'd like to bring back up underground in the city at some point.
Joseph and I and Jackie, I believe, met with them, it's been several months ago, and we started that conversation, so they are looking at some ideas.
Yeah, good. Do we know if Gloria's, which is very good food, by the way, if Gloria's has closed on the hotel?
The bankruptcy hearing to approve the sale is March 3rd, I believe.
Okay, knew we had to be closed because it was a 30-day closing, so, okay. If you'll keep us abreast on, I'd love to hear that good news so we can all clap when that happens. I wasn't going to jump on the bandwagon for the bonus, but I'll just give you all a little bit of perspective that you probably don't know, and we don't talk about it a lot because it would sound weird if it was out of context, but it's regular that I'm texting with Kathy at 6:30 in the morning, or on the phone at 7 o'clock in the morning, or 9:30 at night, or a Sunday. She is literally willing to let me pester her 24/7 when it comes to this city, so, because a lot of the stuff that I do write is after working hours, I mean, I got a day job, right, and so then when I'm meeting with people, it's typically either early in the morning or late at night, by the time I get a chance to ask her a question or give her an update, it's long after working hours for her, or well before. And I'll just tell you that never once has she ever said, hey, I'm not on the clock right now, or hey, I'm busy, or, you know, hey, I'm having a glass of wine, can you call me back, you know? She's on the spot, so she absolutely goes above and beyond, probably more so than what we even know, so. Happy Valentine's Day to all the wonderful ladies that work for the city of Shenandoah, as well as all of our residents out there and strategic partners, not you, John, I'm not telling you have to. I did tell Derek Happy Valentine's Day out in the hallway, but that's a whole different deal. So Happy Valentine's Day to everybody, we have that coming up on Sunday, which consequently is also mine and my wife's anniversary, I did that intentionally. But it got me thinking about holidays, and I'm hoping, Ms. Debbie, that Easter is on everybody's radar and that we are planning full speed ahead to have the best-ever Easter egg hunt since we didn't get to have one last year. I hope we, I hope we are anticipating getting to have one and not, and not the other way around, so. I know we're really early along to bring that up, but it made me think of it when I thought of it, the fact that we have a holiday coming up this weekend, and y'all know how much I love the Easter egg hunt, so. And with that, I don't have anything else, so thanks, everybody, for coming tonight, appreciate everybody being involved in the city and doing what you can to make it a better place for everybody. We're going to move into executive session, and we are going to talk about economic development in the ETJ, and I think that is it. Yep, so we will recess the regular meeting at 7:52, and we will move into executive session. Thanks for coming, everybody. Thanks for coming, everybody.
Okay, we will recess the executive session at 8:31 and resume the regular session. For the record, no action was taken in the executive session.